I called the May the 27th, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll note that we have a quorum. If we'd all please rise, we'll have the implication from Allen Wilder of Sunny Hills Church. It remains standing for the pledge.
Dear God, certainly, we have been reminded throughout the week of Your Majesty and Power as we've driven near the New River, watched those rapids, or seen the sun come up over National Forest. Lord, Your greatness is all around us. And, Lord, it's quite humbling to know that despite You being the Maker of the universe and All-Powerful, You desire to hear from us, Your people. So, Lord, we would just simply ask for You to deal with us humbly this morning. Lord, build humility into each of us. Lord, as we deliberate and discuss and lead our county, Lord, I pray that You would find us faithful to integrity and character and a higher standard than you do for each of us, too. So, Father, bless this body of leaders and bless the citizens of this great county. And, Lord, I pray that You bless this great nation, the United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. We'll get right in with the agenda with Citizens Time. We have Ms. Myers that signed up to speak on three subjects. Ms. Myers?
Yes, good morning, gentlemen. In regard to the public hearing notices that were in the paper, the school board notice was in the back pages. And if you got them out and looked at it, the money spent that you say and they say is different, a $200,000 difference in '12, only $40,000, but there's an $8 million discrepancy between your published figures here in the proposed budget and what you guys did on your county budget. Did anybody notice? So, there's discrepancies.
Only $8 million discrepancy. That's in there was the school construction from last year that's not in this year's budget.
But it says "proposed," and they're saying that they're proposing there's an $8 million difference. It shouldn't be shown somewhere? It says proposed budget is $8 million less than what you guys have over here.
Well, there's no school construction in this year's budget. That was in, the $8 million was in last year's budget.
I'm talking about this year's. Under the FY '15, there's an $8 million discrepancy from here to here.
They're showing in the school budget, $8 million less than what they got last year.
Um...
And that was because of the school construction they had last year.
Okay. But you're giving them $8 million more.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
It's showing in our budgets, not there.
It's what?
They must not be showing the $8 million school construction in their budget.
Okay. All right, school construction. Okay. I was curious about a salary schedule. This had come out in FY '15. There was none. I had asked for it last year, but none was published, and there is none on the website this year. And could that happen? Salary schedule budget for employees?
We'll check into it.
Okay. And also, when will the proposed budget and all the wish list is still on the computer page, but there is no actual budget? Are you guys waiting for the holdup from Richmond before you publish, or what? There's pieces, parts, but the whole thing is not there?
Yes, we're waiting on Richmond, but, you know, eventually we'll come to a budget.
When will the paperwork be done, though? When will it be on the computer?
The proposed line item budgets will be on this week. The state budget will not be finalized. Our public hearing is next week.
Right.
Board of Supervisors will not adopt the budget until June 30th.
Right.
This year's.
Okay.
As soon as we get it all, what we've got is proposed issuance now. It's just in flux until the state adopts a budget.
Okay. And so, it would be appreciated if you'd get the salary schedule on there also. People would like to know that. And I'd just like to commend the people who do the tourism board, that group. The new brochure for trails, I hope you've all seen that, has been very, very well accepted. I have given out about 150 of those in the last 10 days, the Equestrian community, people from Bedford to Martinsville to all over. The map is very, very well received, and those people spend a lot of money in our area. So, I hope you commend them for their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. No one else has signed up? Is anybody else would like to speak during Citizens Time that didn't get a chance to sign up? Here are none. I'll close Citizens Time. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the With County Enterprise Zone. With County, the With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to consider amending the With County Enterprise Zone's local incentives and boundaries. Public comment regarding these proposed amendments will be heard at this hearing. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May the 27th, 2014, at 9:05 a.m. in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South 6th Street, Woodford, Virginia. And we have a... I will ask if anybody, we have a presentation to be presented. If you come on up and... Short presentation, then we'll go in and see if anybody would like to speak concerning the public hearing.
Good morning. I have a small, a short presentation just to do an overview of the proposed amendments, the new maps, and the new incentives. This is just a little information about the overview of our current enterprise zone, which is Zone 11, adopted in 2005, last amended in 2011, adding the data center amendment. And just if anyone is, I thought it would be interesting to see the amount of incentives that have been paid to enterprise zone companies since the inception of 2005. This is our current zone, which includes all of Progress Park and small amounts of land that are adjacent. And this is the new amended zone, which includes Progress Park and also some commercial areas such as in Royal Retreat, out at the, in the proposed tourism, in the tourism corridor along 81, downtown Woodville, and also some industrial zones in Royal Retreat and Woodville as well. And this is, well, the proposed with Progress Park will actually will remove a small amount that is not in the park proper. It's privately owned, and there's been some, a little bit of difficulty getting a set price for that land, so the ability to market it has been less than stellar. This is a zone in Royal Retreat, includes land in around the industrial park, including Clockner and the soon-to-be vacant Mid-Atlantic Building, as well as land around the interstate for commercial development. This is area, this is part of Fairview Park, which includes several of our existing industries, including some that we hope will expand in the near future. This is the downtown corridor in Woodville. We know with the revitalization effort, this is, the incentives for that are hoped to further along that. This is what I'm calling Industry Road. It's out by the former Acumen Building or Screw Factory Building, includes Pacific Alliance or Don Kenny, and also Hutchinson. The hope is we can help possibly have an expansion at one of the two existing industries there, and maybe fill that vacant building. The Nye Road area that's around Pepsi includes some of the industrial lots around there. The hopes, again, is to incentivize industry around there. And this is around Exit 77 or the tourism corridor. And actually, the next four, we'll just show you those areas around the corridor. And this is just a little bit of information about the, along with our local incentives are the state incentives, there are the two, which is the Real Property Investment Grant and the Job Creation Grant. And these are on top of anything the localities would give as incentives to businesses who invest in, do property investment and create jobs. These are the current incentives we have in the, that are applied to Progress specifically. And these are the soon-to-be, the proposed added incentives. And as you'll see, some of these are very much directed toward commercial investment, including retail, hotel, and restaurant. And that's what, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any board member have any questions?
The With County Tourism Corridor?
Yes.
That's the corridor that now allows mixed beverage?
Yes.
Any other board member have any questions?
Could you explain the schedule?
Sure. The two, because we include incentives that are given by the Town of Royal Retreat and the Town of Woodville, both towns have passed resolutions and sent to the Board of Supervisors saying, agreeing to provide those incentives. And now it's with you, we're having this public hearing. After the hearing, after the public hearing, you will be asked to also pass a resolution adopting this amended, the amended geography and the amended incentives. And once that is finished, we will send the application to the Department of Housing and Community Development. They're usually relatively quick about approval, or getting back to us if they have questions. We'll probably know in a couple of months. And if, once accepted, the amended, the amended zone and incentives become retroactively active as of January 1st of this year. So, any business that started this year would be eligible for any of the incentives. Any other questions?
So, existing businesses that are sold to a new person, that person is not eligible?
For, depends on what incentive. If for, like, the restaurant or hotel, no. Those are, those are for completely new investments. If they were to do expansions, especially in the tourism corridor, those could be.
But if, if there's a business that's in the enterprise zone right now?
Yes.
The owners, whether it's a corporation, individual, whatever, sell that to somebody else, the new person or new group coming in, are they eligible for these incentives or not?
They're only eligible for the incentives with an expansion, not for the taking over of...
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. House?
Mm-hmm.
That's true, but they continue, if there's a reduced wastewater rate or a reduced water rate, they have those minimum investments, and they're just ongoing, they continue to receive those.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, it doesn't just cut off, but they're not, they're not eligible for any new incentives just simply because ownership changed.
I will now open up the floor for anybody who would like to speak on the public hearing. Ms. Myers?
I've got a couple of questions.
Would you please come, would you please come up?
The first slide that showed us the money, the incentive, was that statewide?
No, that's ours only.
That, this is just for here?
For Zone 11 since 2005.
Okay, since 2005.
Yes.
So, local, we've put out $7 million, or how much has the taxpayer put out?
They actually have not. What that incentive is, majority, it was a reduction in water rates. That is, with enterprise incentives, they are not, they're normally, we don't pay anything. We either reduce rates that are given for a bit because we're considering, this is a new business, so it's new money to us.
Okay.
So, we don't pay anything to them. We either reduce the rates?
Okay.
Or we can waive a connection fee?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or, you know, kind of do a grant that rebates back something they've paid already. But it's no, it's no, none of our current money is going anywhere.
Okay.
It's going to be paid for these incentives. A majority of that, probably 85% of that $7 million is reduced water rates from the Town of Woodville.
Okay. So, it hasn't cost the taxpayer?
No, it does not. It doesn't cost.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I may, all the reduced water rates, if you live outside the corporate limits of Woodville, there's a surcharge placed on water rates to anybody that's on the town of Woodville's water system and live outside of corporate limits. The incentive is they reduce those to in-town rates instead of charging these, the higher rate for being out of town. A lot of that money is, was a reduced or waived connection to the Town of Woodville, land of Wood County, the wastewater. On the wastewater side, we don't charge any, we waive those connection fees. For a Gatorade example, their connection fee may have been a couple million dollars. So, there was no real cost, you just wait. They actually put the connection fee in, made it all the construction. So, most of those deal with utility costs. So, there was any payments back, it was reduced or waived.
Does anyone else would like to speak on the public hearing? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is, as mentioned from the previous meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll see. I have a motion and second any discussion, any corrections or changes to be made to the minutes. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Houseman? Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. I have a motion to pay the invoices.
I'll make the motion that we pay the invoices as presented.
I'll second. I have a motion to second, is there any invoice any board member would like to discuss or ask any questions about? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Dalton, do we have anything on our old business? Okay, hearing nothing on our old business, we'll go right into reports. Mr. Sam Crockett, if you'd like to come up and give us a Treasury report?
Yes, sir. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sam.
Sheriff and I have just talked about all the wrecks this weekend. Busy weekend for the hill. In our consolidated account report, currently, we have $50,294,000 in all of our funds. And then the general fund balance is at $31,506,000. For that amount, and as far as our collections go right now, we're at $17,991,000. We just sent out the second notices on the real estate. We're one where we tell them we're going to put their ad, their name in the paper, so that's bringing in some real estate. We sent out a little over 1,500 delinquent notices for the real estate, so we should start getting, hopefully, a bunch of real estate interests keep getting their name in the paper. I think that's worse than give them a warrant and debt. People just hate having their name in the paper because their busybody neighbors talk about them. So, anybody got any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Sam?
Sam, it looks like we've made some good strides in collections since last month. Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, we, that notice we put in the personal property about the DMV stops has brought in quite a few people, and we've had people that have to make payments on their taxes. And so, we started a list of ones we said we'd hold off putting their name, their name over the DMV, so then let them make some payments. You know, we try to work with people best we can on stuff like that, you know, make it, I know times are tough for a lot of people.
I noticed the uncollected was less than it has been the last two years, or two years this year, so that's, or 2013.
There might be a bookwork error there. Debbie and I have been talking about that, and that's something she's been offered a couple of days. We've got to get it straightened out. She's wanting to get with Bruce to figure out why that's like that, because I don't think it's correct, because what we have on the computer is, is different than what she has. I think she's got something in the wrong item, in the wrong line item. And her and Bruce are going to get together and try to straighten that out, and I apologize for that, but it happens.
I was going to say, great job.
I wish I could say, okay, thank you, but the honest truth is that Debbie and I have been talking about that. We think there's an error, and we've got to get it straightened out. Her and Bruce are going to work on that. He's aware of it.
And, Mr. Crockett, this may be a question for you, or maybe a question for Ms. Barker. On machinery and tools tax, it shows an increase of $261,000. Does that cause somebody is added?
I would have to go back to the look, I'm not so sure.
Okay.
I'll shoot you a call or shoot you an email.
That'd be fine. I was just wondering, I didn't know if, yeah, if we had had some expansion in Wood County that would amount to, you know, to that or not.
I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
Just take their money. That's all I can do. All right.
Does anyone in the house have any questions? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Fay, would you like to give a report? You don't have anything? Okay. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning to all of you.
Good morning.
You had a pleasant weekend?
Actually, I got to do something fun yesterday. That's a real change for me. But I still haven't gotten over Joes for any more ribs. In your packet, you'll probably found a memorandum I sent to Mr. Dalton. Effective June 1, 2014, Captain Doug Tuck will be retired from the With County Sheriff's Office after 28 years of service. Virginia Statute 591, 148.3 allows the retiree to purchase his duty weapon for $1. And that's a statewide practice. So, I would, the details of the weapon that were being sold are in the memorandum, and it's to be awarded to him for his service.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that a motion again. For Dalton.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I tell you, I've known Doug for a long time, worked with him through the school systems, and, I mean, he was really, yeah, he's just, yeah, he was really, you know, really good to work with. I actually don't mind if we put it on sale, sell it for $0.99. So, if you would please tell him I was thinking about it.
I don't mind saying, Sheriff, I've known Doug, Doug Tuck for several years, and to see somebody, over the years, that's worked as hard as Doug has worked, I mean, they don't call him Bird Dog Tuck for anything.
No, they don't.
I mean, if there's somebody out there, he's right hot on their trail.
He will be sorely missed, I assure you.
He's been a tremendous asset to this county and the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
And give him my thanks and the board thanks, I think I can speak for the board. Any other discussion? All in favor of giving Captain Tuck his service weapon for $1? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
If a minute is shared, $10 has been paid.
The bill has been paid.
Really, the only other thing I have, unless y'all have some questions of me, is detailing trash collection. Weather's been against us, and we've had some mechanical issues, but we still, in the last about five weeks, collected 21,960 pounds of trash for a grand total, since we started the program, of 113,650 pounds. It's a lot of trash. And you know you've got a lot of trash when you have convicted felons fussing about how much trash people are throwing out.
You know, I know we've said it in the past, but them guys are doing an excellent job.
And we are working, got a request from the county through Jeremy Farley about this 76-mile-long yard sale, I believe, that we will be concentrating a lot on 21 South. But that's a, that's a long piece of highway, so it's, takes several days to cover it. We're also going to be working on Castleton Road, I believe, or some, another request for Route 94. So, they're staying busy. Real busy. Have all of the equipment issues been resolved, Mr. Dalton?
When you said that, I was just wondering what the equipment issues?
Uh, it's taillights on the trailer.
Okay.
And I believe a frame repair on the bus itself.
That'll do.
Okay, very good. Do y'all have any requests for?
A comment. I talked to VDOT about the littering signs. Could you help by telling them where we would like to have some, like it's parking rides?
Parking rides, a dang good place. There were littering signs there. I don't know where they went.
We need to get some on Brewster Mountain. And I'm sure everybody on the board's got some pet place that they'd like to get a sign. Now, the other part of that question is, if we get the signs, can we have a better chance of getting some tickets written?
We don't need the signs for, that's law. We don't need a sign, an anti-littering sign, to be able to enforce it. When it's seen, we take action. But our worst problem areas are probably done after dark. We cleaned up the dump, and it was a dump on Ramsey Mountain.
You went up at the water, have y'all been up to the water tank yet with the crew?
Yeah. Water tank is off limits to us, it's not part of the road system.
So, that's Billy's problem, then?
That's somebody else's problem. It's got to be on the highway for VDOT.
Actually, the cul-de-sac in front of the water tank is the end of state maintenance.
You, I'm sorry?
The cul-de-sac in front of the water tank is the end of state maintenance.
Okay.
So, that route is part of the state.
Is it? Okay, okay.
It's got a brown sign, but it's a wrong sign.
So, there should be a white sign there?
There is a white VDOT sign, it's red.
I thought that ended right at where the gate used to be. It goes all the way up to the dock.
If you check the mileage on the VDOT map, it was in front of the water.
I'll put that on the list. Any others? Any other questions?
I'm good for now.
Doug, I will say that I saw on social media this weekend, I think a reporter from, from Bluefield said that the interstate coverage in With County was the best from her trip to Charlotte, from Charlotte to, to Bluefield, so...
Well, there is an operation going on right now, which you may have seen on the news, you may not have, but it's called Drive to Save Lives. And it's a local and state initiative, and the goal is to reduce traffic fatalities by 15% in 2015 over the levels they were in 2014. And one of the things that has to be addressed is seatbelt use. And one of the things that has to be addressed is seatbelt use. The unrestrained fatalities actually rode after being dropping and dropping and dropping for years suddenly spiked back up.
Doug, I know it's the day after, but do you have a number of the accidents in the county?
No, I do not.
Or if there's any fatalities?
I have some notable ones, starting Friday when the tractor-trailer turned over on 77, which locked up 717, 2152 North for about five hours.
Was there any backups you know of on Fridays or?
Uh, Friday evening, there was a backup on 81 South due to an accident around 71, 72 mile marker and it went all the way to 79 mile marker, three lanes. So, it was, it was pretty slow.
I will note that if you haven't been out on the interstate, they have painted the 81 big placard and rode on the 81 lane, so, and it looks good, you can see it.
Indeed. Hopefully, that'll stop the weaving in and out of traffic during high-volume periods.
I assume they go come back and put 77 placards on 77 lanes.
I would hope, I would hope that they would do that.
But I would note that they have got the 81.
Yeah, they have one similar to that and where 40 and 81 become, where 40 splits off of the 81 track. So, maybe it'll catch some people's attention because that's always the problem area on holidays. Yes?
This may be to Mr. Dalton instead of you. This trash is generated that these prisoners pick up, who pays to dispose of it? County or?
County.
We've gone for a close, but county or?
It is a drain on the taxpayer for the trash that's being thrown out. Now, granted, a lot of it's tax now. Because you'll always find where a bag of trash has fallen out and exploded or it's come out of the back of a pickup truck or a trailer. But I, by the same token, while I was preparing to take action against some people, where some trash had come off the back of their pickup truck, they stopped, pulled over and walked back, picked it up, but they noticed it. Not everybody notices it or makes the conscious decision to go back and pick up their mess.
Yeah, I know that. I had part of a couch in front of my house on Chapman Road this weekend.
Part of a couch?
Somebody just left it for you to sit on.
Sitting in the middle of the road, I don't think I'd sit on it.
They left it for you to sit on.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, we'll keep going down, report for Fire and Rescue Committee, Mr. Hausman.
There was an opening on the Board of Directors for Lead Mines Rescue Squad due to resignation. And the Fire and Rescue Committee actually interviewed three very qualified citizens from the area, three people who were willing to, you know, sacrifice their time to work on the Board of Directors and we really appreciate that. But after, after all the interviews, you know, the Fire and Rescue Committee met on May 20, 2014, and recommends appointing Ms. Juanita Branscombe to the Lead Mines Rescue Squad Board of Directors. Ms. Branscombe has extensive experience with Rescue Squad. She also is in the healthcare field. She, she's a school nurse. She also has done a lot of training with bus drivers and things like this and she seemed to have, the committee filed a very good grasp of what was needed and what needed to be done. So, we recommend Ms. Juanita Branscombe for the Lead Mines Rescue Squad Board of Directors.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. I open the floor up for discussion. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor of appointing Ms. Branscombe to Lead Mines Rescue Squad Board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ms. Branscombe is appointed.
And Mr. Chairman, I assume that we will have some from staff contact?
We'll write a letter.
Do we write a letter to all of them? Okay.
Cut off, Mr. Hausman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Ag Expo Status Report. Mr. Dalton?
Ag Expo, proceeding forward, we received a draft economic impact study from Terry Pond and the Weldon Cooper Center. Ag Expo Committee is continuing to work on their business plan. Currently, they're working on, they're working on the strategy for grant applications to Trump and others. For the next round of grant applications, we should be coming forward about August.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Next item on the agenda is the Water Committee report.
I wasn't there, so I'll leave it up to you all that goes there.
Gary was trying to.
Yeah.
Uh, we met and we have three recommendations to make. The first one is to approve the Spiegel Division 1A Change Order Number Three. And of course, this is listed in your packet, but basically what that is, is just an adjustment between what actually went in the ground and what was, you know, what was planned. You know, there may have been some changes and so all we're doing here is just kind of cleaning up the contract and actually paying for the work that was actually done.
Okay, we'll do these one at a time.
Okay.
Come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Uh, second one is to approve Spiegel Division 1B Change Order Number Two. And the reason these are like 1A, 1B, these are two different contractors and, but this is basically the same thing, just to clean it up and make the, you know, the money match what was actually done.
Okay, come from committee, again, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Uh, the third one is we recommend to adopt the proposed water bill adjustment policy and you can look down through and see that water adjustment bill policy. The basic idea behind this is that water that comes into With County, regardless of where it goes, has to be paid for. Whether it goes to a business and industry or whether it goes into somebody's house and they use it to wash dishes or take bath or water flowers, that water has to be paid for. And so what this does actually is if there are leaks and for subsurface leaks, you know, actually the customer would not pay for the total cost retail, but they would pay for the cost of the water. And so, again, you can see that in your packet. The, I will just say that, you know, my concern during the meeting was item number two, where it says adjustments shall be allowed for subsurface leaks and it says adjustments for non-subsurface leaks not immediately visible may be approved for individuals meeting the same financial guidelines as established for reduced connection fee. And I appreciate that, you know, being in there, but, and I understand that the water has to be paid for. The only point that I would offer for discussion is, you know, if a leak is not visible, you know, and the person only finds out when they get to Beagle, you know, it, I'm, you know, may not be a subsurface leak, it may be under a manufactured home, it may be in a rental house that nobody's seeing right at that time and that sort of thing. So, we really don't allow for, you know, adjustments for that. But that's just, you know, something that I throw out for point of discussion. Right now, you know, the recommendation is as it says right here.
And you hear the recommendation from the Water Committee before for discussion?
I think Gary's got a valid point. I mean, if it's under a trailer and they don't know it's leaking, I mean, it's not there. I mean, what's the difference between being under the trailer and underground? If it's, I mean, it's running out on top of the ground, then that's different, but...
Well, would this change take away the discretion and capability of the Water Committee to make adjustments?
The way I understand it would. Now, you know, the thing that I want to emphasize, and Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I discussed this before, I should have waited.
That's okay.
But, yeah, water has got to be paid for, I understand that. And if somebody does have a leak on their property, you know, to pay for the actual cost of the water, I can understand because if they don't pay for the cost of the water, then it gets spread out over, you know, everybody else who, you know, who doesn't have leaks. But there are, just in the last little bit, there would have been two adjustments that we made that with this, we would not have been able to make. Like the Ivoh Fire Department and, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, I wouldn't mention it anyway, but who had a house, I think it was a rental house that he'd had some work done and nobody was there, the pop-off valve on hot water heater, or there was some leak and it was, you know, thousands of gallons that leaked out and they didn't discover it until the, until the bill. This would not, Mr. Barron, help me, this would not allow us to make any adjustment on those they would pay retail for the water.
It's the end of discussion on the motion.
I mean, if you changed, if you changed number two and just took out the financial guidelines part, would that not make it suitable, Gary? Because then the Water Committee could still make that decision whether or not it was an acceptable leak?
Well, actually, I think, you know, Gene, what, I mean, if we did that, what we would probably have to do is say adjustments shall be allowed for subsurface leaks and for non-subsurface leaks not immediately visible. And that basically is what's in the old policy, is it not, Mr. Barron? Except that in this, people still have to pay for the cost of the water.
Yeah. Well, I agree. I mean, they got to pay for the water because we have to pay for it.
Right.
We can't, we lose money on it.
So, if we see, if you own a house and you have a non-subsurface leak, if you meet financial guidelines, you'll get a break, but if you don't meet financial guidelines, you got to pay for it.
You pay retail.
Any other discussion?
This is so broad, I'm in favor of leaving it up to the Water Committee to make a judgment on a case-by-case basis.
If that's the case, if we do it like that, we'll have to send it back to committee for rewritten, Mr. Dalton wanted me, and have it brought up again if we change, change it as, if we don't vote on it as it is.
Or I would offer... I would, again, for discussion to say that adjustments shall be allowed for subsurface leaks and adjustments for non-subsurface leaks not immediately visible may be approved.
Brought before the Water Committee for approval?
Well, I would, I would think that, you know, that would, in that way, if it is a subsurface leak, there's no question. If it's a leak that's not immediately visible, then it would come to the, to the Water Committee for consideration, as, you know, Mr. Hill was talking about. But again, people would still have to pay for the cost of the water.
Are you making that as an amendment?
I would offer that as an amendment.
I need to say it? I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the proposed water bill adjustment policy. Would you please state that?
Sorry, I would recommend amending item number two to read adjustments shall be allowed for subsurface leaks and adjustments for non-subsurface leaks not immediately visible may be approved.
Brought before the Water Committee for?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, made the assumption that it would be...
To review.
Actually, yeah, but the, when I say may be approved, it can go to the Water Committee for discussion, but it still has to be approved by the whole board.
Okay, we have a second. I'll do a roll call vote.
Wait a minute. Steven?
Yes.
I guess just clarification, if the Water Committee recommends an adjustment, you still want to take it before the board, you want to make that part of the policy, if the Water Committee approves that?
It would be, it would actually be better if the Water Committee could just approve it because it would make it quicker to get done.
I think so too. Just for the Water Committee to approve it. Any other discussion? Here are none. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Amended motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Budget Committee report.
Okay, I'll, I'll read the motion here or the recommendation and then we can, we can discuss or take any questions. The Budget Committee was presented the bids for the operations of the With County Convenience Center. A total of four bids were received for the proposed services. Only two of the bidders provided pricing in accordance with the bid documents. Two bidders provided qualified bids. The county administrator and staff met with the two bidders who provided qualified bids and received additional documentation. The county administrator met with the county attorney concerning the bids and entered into negotiations with the lowest non-qualified bidder at a bid price of $109,000 per month of service. We recommend that the Board of Supervisors accept the recommendation and request the county attorney prepare a contract and authorize the chair and county administrator to execute the completed contract. So, in our discussions, we, and Scott, if you or Mr. Dalton have anything to add here, we discussed, we negotiated a price with a non-qualified bidder of $109,000 per month, which actually saves us about $10,000 a month from what we're currently paying.
I was just refreshing my conversation with Mr. Dalton. I appreciate it. I'm good.
You have nothing to add, Mr.?
I have anything to add.
Mr. Dalton?
Now, I think we had a diverse group of bids, the two bidders that did it exactly as the specifications played out. And then we had two bidders that asked for the qualifications to bid. We examined those to see what this... We examined those to see what this, what happened. One bidder finally agreed to remove his qualification or that stipulation. We got some clarifications from the other bidders. I talked to Mr. Farley about the whole process, Mr. Farley. Look at the responsive bidder, did it exactly as we proposed. And there, negotiated that responsive bidder.
You said this is gonna save $10,000 per month a month? Is it, are we still looking at the same service?
Exactly.
Okay.
Some days, too, after seven, two or half days, exactly as you're going. Because with all these bids, the, part of the contract is we've got to change from land time to this time. If fuel adjustment is more than, if it's below that, we get a reduction in our bill. Also, in the bid, the joint public service authority lowers their activity fee. We get that too. If you're going to five dollars, if we're taking 10,000 tons a year, you go up to five bucks. We get that 50,000 in addition. But, on the opposite side, minimum wage goes for this now, 15 bucks.
I just, I mean, I just want to make sure that the service, I mean, not, I ain't worried about who does it, but the actual service, they're gonna be open the same times and all that. Yeah, we had seven or eight options available, I know that.
What's the length of the contract, Mr. Dalton? Five years.
I'm just a little bit confused there. What's the difference between a non-qualified bidder and a qualified bidder?
A responsive or non-responsive. Responsive bidder bids exactly as you put your bid documents out. A qualified bidder, an asterisk or stipulations on what things have had to happen before they get bid.
Well, I still don't know the one I did. A qualified bidder is someone who qualifies his bid. A non-qualified bidder is one that bid it just like you ask him to. Same thing as buying a vehicle. If you said it would have a spare tire and two doors, and you put an asterisk and said, "I'm not bidding the spare tire," then that's a qualified bid.
Okay.
I have another question I want. Does the contractor avail the PSA to what their recovery is on recyclable material? I've had several people view that iron at the transfer stations and think it's really gold, but it is a lot of scrap. Do they make that available to the PSA, how much they're recovering?
They make it available to us when we can on our recycling. For plastics, you know, there's metal, cardboard, you make them on the metal, the standoff, the ton. By the time you haul them, are they making it? Because we don't pay the fee for the hauling. We recovered it, then you, there was a bid of 125 bucks per trip, the haul. Which, if you get eight tons on there and save bucks and it costs you 125, and haul it, that's not the best option.
Oh, but that's kind of answer the public needs to hear because it's so visible that it looks like a lot of money. When somebody can take a pickup load to one of the cyclers and get $100 for it, they look at that big container and think that there's thousands of dollars there. That's what confuses the issue of whether that should be county money or operator money. As long as it's made available, that you know what it is, that's a judgment call on negotiation.
We asked for that price, the haul.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion, recommendation from the Budget Committee to accept the recommendations and request the county attorney to prepare a contract and authorize the chair and the county administrator to execute the completed contract. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Now, will you not make that announcement till you have a signed contract?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, County Administrator's report. Mr. Dalton?
We have four items in the package. First is information with County Public Security's graduation schedule. Dr. Brandon's in the Technology Center this Thursday at 7:00. Rural Creek High School Friday at 6:00 P.M. George Wood High School Friday at 8:00 P.M. Of course, the High School of Kennedy on Saturday morning, May 31st.
The, With County Technology Center, that graduation is the same time that we have, that VDOT has the, that we're in the public hearing here.
Did you speak up, Mr. Dalton? Did you speak up?
We, Withmore Community College, Dr. White's letter. We have two appointments that need to be made prior to June 30th.
So, they can take effect?
July 1st, those two vacancies. Mr. Pendleton, Mr. Manuel, there's two terms on that. And you have the requirements of distribution and representation, the due diligence responsibilities and categories of the Community College Board membership. Where the appoint has to have one of those categories.
So, the opportunity that we would have to nominate someone is gonna be at the regular board meeting on the 13th, June 13th? That's right? Okay.
If you have nominees, I will share with the information is required to be disclosed with financial disclosures and things that Dr. White included. Next item is the Centers of Historic Resources concerning the Rural Creek Depot being placed on the National Restaurant for Historic Places and inclusion of Virginia Landmarks Restaurant. You have until Thursday, June 19th to make any comments that you would like concerning that. Last item, sorry, deals with fire rescue. But, Dr. Brandon, Mr. Davidson, and Bill Akers, Southwest Community Medical Program. This is a program that the Fire Rescue Committee brought forth. We met, seems that we'll be working with Mr. Akers. We're looking at a grant. We're also looking at how to fund the position. Cost of position is about $17,000 a year. Plus is about $10,000 to buy required equipment. We can make an application, go through the foundation, make some seed money too. But, apparently, it's either starting in second semester. Next school year, which will be in January, or following startup of the school, 2015, which is more than likely to happen since you can find a qualified instructor. Working with Mr. Akers, this equipment fee purchase. Get that in the school system. It would be as an elective, probably have two semesters of that to get the right app. And then graduate, you'll be fully qualified to pass. He hired us in EMT and paid service for our students.
And they also did no credits for the course?
They did no credits. You went forward in the health profession, living college. Based off of this current society, there's a couple of counties already doing that. Entry level pay for those people to graduate, so it'd be around $30,000. So, it's a bit further, will be continued to update the board over the course of that.
Would that qualify at Withbrand Foundation to ask them for a grant for the startup money?
That's what we intend to do.
For the whole deal, including instruction? And then, could you put a subtitle to that, that it be a continuing grant as long as the program survives at that cost?
I think it's one of those grants that you have to put in for every year. Typically, what they've done, Jeff, is even the county has provided seed money. That seed money gets it up and running. You have to eventually take ownership.
In your discussions with Dr. Brandon, I thought I heard you say just a second ago, the two semester?
Yeah.
Talking about doing through the Technology Center?
The hours you have to do the Technology Center, the hours you have to get, you have a block schedule. If you miss many days, you have a program. There's so many, so many hours.
So many clock hours? Yeah.
It's usually in the classroom with DMT. And you potentially could get it there, get it once semester. But after you miss a few, then you're out of the program. Dr. Brandon is gonna evaluate that and he thinks it probably better to do it over a two semester here. So, or two blocks.
Because a 90-minute period, which is an hour and a half, which I think is what they get at the vocational school, maybe that's, you know, that is 135 hours per semester. And most, actually, you know, for contact hours for high school credit, it's supposed to be 140. But, you know, they make allowances for block schedules. But, for the college, there's a, I'm assuming that there's a pretty standard number of contact hours to get that dual credit.
Bill Akers is with Southwest Community College, and that's where we're with withmore Community College. But, the issue is, like the Rural Creek kids or the Orchardwood kids, you're being bused in. Typically, you're getting there, missing a few minutes before playing.
Well, that's, and that's why they count like an hour and a half at the vocational school. So, yeah, it's hard to, for the state, you know, for high school credits, you can kind of count transportation time. But for dual credit, I don't think that's gonna fly.
Nor for the EMT program.
Yeah.
And then at the end of the program, I have talked to two of the rescue squads about the ride along time. You gotta have so much ride along time out there. But, Dr. Brandon, he was gonna speak with his staff and see which is the best. I think there's critical hours that if you have to have classroom times, like Community College. He knows that better than I have managed. Mr. Chairman, that completes everything.
Okay. Moving on to agenda, County Attorney's report, Mr. Farley.
Mr. Chairman, I was asked to draft an amendment or an ordinance for, to charge a solid waste fee, I believe was emailed to you, essentially charging $100 per dwelling unit in the county for solid waste fee disposal. Might make a copy. You guys, you got your emails, right? With the ordinance on?
I don't remember getting any.
I don't remember getting it either.
Yeah, we got it. It's, it was sent-
From Slayell?
May 23rd at 3:15.
Let me make this one change, then someone, we can make some copies of it if you would like.
May 23rd was Friday.
My version didn't have it sent on there. Make copies of that.
Forward.
Yeah.
May 23rd?
It's from Slayell.
Mark? Mr. Chairman, I'll make the copies. Can we move forward?
Yes. Okay.
That's all. We can come back and talk about that, or if you want to talk about it now while she's making copies. Probably better off if you guys can see it and we talk about it. So, if you want to come back to me later, then that's fine.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
May I ask you a question on this? I remember reading it now, and the thing that I didn't understand is, you know, Mr. Farley says here, this is, or is this from, you know, from Mr. Dalton? It says, "I have a suggested change under the billing portion." Is that from you?
That was from me.
Okay.
I remember it now. I didn't-
Yeah, I, when Steve showed it to me, I thought, oh, yeah. Hey, thank you.
Well, we'll move on. We'll come back to that supervisory report. Mr. Housman?
I don't really have anything.
Okay, Mr. Willis?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hall?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Housman, I mean, Mr. Hill?
No, I have something I'll bring up later.
Okay. Mr. McRoberts, lead minute?
I had a few, but I'll give them to Mr. Berry. He took your-
Okay, Mr. Horne. Mr. Horne, Spiegel District?
I had one guy stop me this morning in Spiegel. It's been a concern before about, there's a feed lot on top of the hill over there that the manure is running down through his property. He went to Soul Conservation or somebody, and they told him to come to his board supervisor. So, where do we go?
Another last thing I brought up, I called DEQ. I bet they sent somebody out.
Well, he said that they did send somebody out there, and what they did was they made him move the cattle out of that front lot. But he said now it's just running through that lot. And he said it's down in his field to where he, he said yesterday he went through the mud and the manure that's in his field with his four-wheel drive truck and got stuck.
Gene, is any part of that lot paved?
The feed lot part?
Yeah.
No, not really. There's some concrete pads in certain spots, but I mean, it's like for, in the silo and stuff like that.
And I used the person's name. I contacted DEQ and asked them to contact him to show him the name.
Sure he wouldn't have a problem with it.
Because last time, we just said it was- Because last time, we just said it was running off into the river. So this is going backwards on the other side of the hill. Contact him today.
All right.
Let me know who that is.
You want to take it?
No.
Anything else, Gene?
Not that I can remember.
I just have one item. I brought this up at the water committee meeting about Ms. Fontaine's bank out there. They come and put the mailbox back up, but they didn't do anything else. All they're wanting is mulch put on the bank and where they can just plant the flowers back like it was. That's.
Is there grain as well?
Well, I.
Maybe a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, but they did come and put the mailbox, welded the mailbox or whatever. Because I think BDOT, it was leaning over to BDOT, finally, I think it was a snowplow and finished it off. But they come and put the mailbox back up, but that's all they've done.
Make sure it's on the punch list.
Okay.
That's one of those decisions I would.
But that's all I have. We'll come back to Mr. Farling. We have the solid waste ordinance in front of us.
So the printout there, the suggestion by Mr. Dalton was added to paragraph two, which is handwritten on there by me. I didn't have a print, I didn't print that off, apparently, and stick it in my file. But what's proposed in there is an amendment to the existing solid waste ordinance that we have. It's just adding a section to that ordinance, which states the county can charge a fee for solid waste disposal to all the citizens that have a dwelling unit or residence on their property. And the fees charged, the way it's written, is charged to each dwelling unit. So if there's two homes on my property, I have to pay two fees. And those are identified on the tax assessment records as residence structures, is how the county would determine who to charge the fee to. The goal would be to have the treasurer include that fee on the real estate tax bill that goes out to be paid on December fifth. So we have that as the due date of December fifth for that fee that you would charge for the solid waste disposal.
I'll open up the floor for discussion.
It just has to be a dwelling, correct? Not necessarily a live, someone living in there? Is that how the ordinance reads?
It's, that's correct. It has to be a dwelling unit. That's right.
So if you have a empty, like rental property or something, it's, you're still going to get the bill?
That's right. And that information comes from, we believe, the commissioner of revenues records that on the taxes, they assess the houses. You know, they assess it as a commercial property, or they assess it as farmland, or they assess it as a residential. And it'll show on there. You know, if there's a house and a mobile home on there, then I believe that shows up as two separate residences on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. What are we discussing? I mean, are we discussing changes in this? Are we discussing addition?
What you're discussing is.
Are we discussing?
This is a proposed amendment. What you're discussing is whether to advertise this for a public hearing for discussion.
Okay, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking. It's not, we're not discussing the merits of this right now.
No. Just whether you said public hearing what David is. But I would suggest if there's, suggesting things you'd like to see, probably a good time to bring it out.
I've got two. One, while you're processing the sausage here, to have some kind of a section there on folks that meet the standard that they can't afford to pay whatever formula you use for that. But there's, there's one we use for other things, isn't it?
Yes.
But then the other one expands the program a little bit. Where I live and in the two eastern districts of the county, we've got a lot of cabins where people are there on weekends. If there's a structure on the property that is livable, they ought to be included. They create just as much or more trash on the weekend than people that live here all the time. I don't know how you structure that.
I was looking for face. She stood by there for help here. But you, I have a feeling of a lot of those structures you're talking about, we don't tax, probably don't have a nine-one-one address or a billing address. So if we do that, there's a process that we're going to have to implement, go out and identify, but initially on the nine-one-one address, find out where the tax bill's going. Because some of those cabins just, you know better not. They're just the people.
Yeah, there's no billing committee or anything, but some of them do have nine-one-one address. Some have now got electric power where I am. But over there on the river, there's some pretty nice places there. And it would appear to me that that affects our total tax base. If there's a structure on real estate, she's got it shown on the map. So I don't know why it would be a burden to include those people. Now, collection might be a different thing, but I've talked to all the ones that I know and told them my position that they ought to be paying. And across the board, they say, well, your taxes are so low here, it's a joke anyway. Go ahead and tax them. Those people just paying on the real estate tax, it is so low here that they think it's a big joke that they even get a tax bill.
Well, I think you've taken me several places, and, but we will have to get out there, all these little kick sites that may be permanent, and their trailers and stuff they pulled in and put a foundation under. We need to get everybody a nine-one-one address, identify those and do it. We'll get through reassessment. Be sure that all those are found and covered.
If we're going to have taxes, I want it to be as broad as we can get them and get everybody that's participating in a fee program, because this is really a fee-for-service type program. And everybody's welcome to bring their trash, then let's collect from all that we can. It's like I told David, we're after the money here.
Well, don't put on every convenience center a sign that says this is for With County trash or whatever.
I'd rather have it in a dumpster than over the bank.
I think the ordinance already says it's only for With County citizens.
Roberts, though, wants a sign, and we can make that happen, Cole.
And I also, you know, think that we could issue some kind of a thing to each, like you could hang on your wind steel, you could leave it from vehicle to vehicle, where the centers would know that you've, and not only people, we have people that, over in Austinville, that live in Carroll County up there, you know, I suggest, I mean, if they want to pay for trash disposal in With County, I think they should be allowed to, if they want to dump it here, they'd be allowed to pay the fee, too. And I also have, well, I talked to Blank County Administrator. They, they charge this quarterly instead of at one big bill at the end of the year. And I think that would, if we could look at doing something like that, instead of having the bill come out at one time, is to do it like quarterly, instead of at the end of the year.
To reinforce what Mr. Reeves says about having something to hang on your mirror or carry in your car, if we thawed out of the box there, one side of that thing could be printed, and the other side could be a reminder about litter and trash, get it in those people's hands. Because as Coy and I talked about, the new part of ninety-four catches a lot of trash because when, when a pickup gets up to a certain speed, the trash blows off the truck. Down through their French Chapel or Baker's Chapel, you see more bags right through that dip than anywhere else on ninety-four. And it's just a speed-related thing. They got it piled up on there, and when they get to whatever that airlift speed is, it goes off the truck. But I think what I was saying is if we're going to print any kind of card, we put a, an advertisement, if you will, on the backside of it, that everybody's responsible in a clean county effort.
Mr. Chairman?
Hi.
Of course, I think that most of you know how I feel about it. I'm not in favor of it. You know, I would much rather seen us, if we, if we needed, you know, to add revenue, which I think that we do, just go ahead and raise taxes, real estate taxes. You know, for some reason, we were, you know, trying to protect real estate taxes, and yet we're, we're now tacking on basically a regressive tax because all households pay, you know, the same. And again, if a household has a combined income of a hundred thousand dollars a year, and another household has a combined income twenty-five thousand dollars a year, a hundred dollar fee has four times the effect on this family as it does, as it does this family. You know, did a little figuring here just a little while ago, and at minimum wage, someone makes fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars a year if they work, you know, eight hours a day or forty hours a week. You know, even if you said, you know, four hundred dollars a month for, for rent or for housing, and then, you know, a thousand dollars for gas, that takes it down to, you know, an income of only about ten thousand dollars a year if a person is on, is making minimum wage. I know that we have the stipulation for people lower income, and I think that that, right now, our threshold for that is a hundred and twenty percent of the, you know, the United States poverty level. And really, the poverty level is, is low enough that a hundred and twenty percent of it is still, you know, pretty low. So we have a lot of people who are above that, but still find it, you know, it hard to pay for, you know, for everything. Whereas an increase in real estate taxes actually is a fairer tax because those who own more, you know, do pay more, but they have more resources. And I, you know, I think it's, you know, a regressive tax, and I think that we've been paying for it anyway. It's been coming out of, out of the funds that we generate from real estate tax. Why do we all of a sudden want to pull it out and, and say, okay, we're going to make a fee now, and you're going to pay for something that we've already been, you know, paying for out of real estate taxes? Why not just raise the real estate taxes for whatever we need? However, I understand that now with, with an affirmative vote the other day, you know, is that our real estate taxes are set for this year? Is that not right? Or for next year, Mr. Dalton?
Well, that's as high as you can be with real estate, any machinery or personal property tax, unless you go back and re-advertise.
Okay. That's, those are my feelings, you know, Mr. Chairman, and I won't belabor it, but I do want you all to know that I'm, you know, not in favor of it.
Mr. Hausman, I know we've been taking the trash disposal money out of the general fund, and it's got to the point, our budget does require that we, we come up with more money. What did, Mr. Dalton, do you have off the top of your head what it costs us a year now for trash disposal that we're paying out of the general fund?
Well, July first, it's going to be a hundred nine, around a hundred and nine thousand per. Nine twelve, so one point two million.
One point two million a year. My thoughts on it is, you know, everybody in the county produces trash. And I think, you know, to be fair to everyone in the county, that a trash disposal fee is the farthest way we can go. I don't like putting the burden on, you know, the taxpayers just because they make more or have more property or, or make more money to support the county more than, than other people. I just think it's, it's a county-wide issue that, that everybody needs to step up and pay their portion of the trash disposal fee.
I agree that everyone should pay the same proportion based on their income and resources. However, I think that this, you know, does not do that. And that's, you know, I, again, I won't, I'm sorry. I won't belabor it anymore.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way we could write in the ordinance, if Mr. Reeves is suggesting quarterly billing, could, if we did annual, if you paid annually, could you receive a discount of some kind? I mean, I.
I think the way the ordinance reached, or proposed amendment to the ordinance, you set that on an annual basis, however you wanted to, whether it's quarterly, as part of the budget process, or a discount. I mean, that's, we, I think we did include in there based off that you could ask for, based off a budget for a financial situation.
Well, if we went, my suggestion would be is if we go with something quarterly billing that we have, something in there that would indicate if you pay annually, just one billing, that you would receive a discount. I know that's, they do that with insurance and other things.
Like if you paid yearly, it'd be seventy or eighty dollars, and if you paid quarterly, it'd be a hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's what I would suggest. I mean, just, I mean, some people, I think, would prefer just to pay it one time versus try to pay it four. And there could be a discount in there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.?
I feel the same as Mr. Hausman, because I have some older people with credit from here, and I know how much you can get out cash or checks. He might come in and do this poverty mess, and they're not. I'm not in favor of that.
Here and now, Mr. Dalton, when do you want to set a public hearing? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Based off all the discussion, I think I'd be better if you made a motion to set a public hearing, or sometime, see where we stay. I'd hate to waste a pile of money moving forward with setting a public hearing if there's no chance for it to happen. But it has to be advertised twice, because this Saturday, June the seventh. But in our board meeting, yours board meeting is June the tenth. So we'd have to come back on like June the seventeenth to make that happen for the ten We'd recess the ninth meeting to another day.
I won't be here for the June the tenth meeting. I'll be out of town.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth will be fine. It's fine with me, it's fine for everybody else on the board.
Well, are we going to vote to have a public hearing or not?
We have just to have a public hearing.
Okay. Have a public hearing. It's okay. We will set to have the public hearing on June the seventeenth at seven P.M. I'll do a roll call vote. I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni. Motion and a second, I'm sorry. I have a motion that we sit the public hearing for June the 17th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Here and none, discussion, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Motion passes four to three. Have the public hearing on June the 17th at 7:00 PM. Okay. Moving on with the agenda. Next thing is new business, and the first thing under new business is consent calendar. I have a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I make a motion, we approve consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes seven zero. Next thing on the agenda is Withland Foundation Grant Award, Mr. Dalton.
Excuse me, sir. We've made applications for a Withland grant, including anything, how much to other things for fire and rescue. We received that grant that requires board action to approve that. And I would ask that that be included in next year's budget. It'll take us a few days to start purchasing, but if we all approve and accept that grant and authorize us to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve the Withland Foundation Grant Award, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
How long, does the grant have implementation, Stephen? This is not going to drag out over two years of buying this equipment, is it?
It's stated in the letter, you have one year to accomplish this first grant. That needs to be done within a year.
If they need this stuff, we need to get it done and not-
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question. You may know or you may not, they've been working on radio systems for a while. Have they gotten it all straightened out?
The last I got, during the fire and rescue committee meeting, the question came up, and Ike mentioned at that point, time to work on, and it came up that they still had another problem. I sent an email to Ike Wednesday or Thursday of last week, asking if it was latest and everything addressed and taken care of. He told me right now, everything appeared to be working correctly.
My suggestion would just going to be that they make sure that the radio system's going to work before they order these new radios. That way, if they have to change something, they have to-
They're doing some testing with some stuff off of Sand Mountain, somewhere else in Beagle, helping out with a repeater on it that is working right now also.
Okay.
Question? Let's vote on it.
Okay, I was reading something.
Sorry to wake you up there.
We have a motion and a second for the Withland Foundation Grant Award, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Memorandum of Understanding Wood River Chapel of the American Red Cross Chapter, I mean.
Excuse me.
We know with the DSS, Wood River Chapter, the Red Cross, everybody, that school system, a few churches, this memorandum of agreement will allow the American Red Cross, anytime we open a shelter, to run that and pay for that cost. They would also bring over one of the issues with cots and blankets, and they would provide all that and store all your local-
Okay, what we need to vote, give you permission to enter into?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion, will you, to give them permission to enter into this agreement?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor of a-
Let's ask a question right there. Is that part of that program that about six months ago, you talked about having multiple small places?
Yes.
And that would be part of what you negotiate with them?
They're in the process of doing that right now. They've got some churches, they've got another list of people that they went out and contacted to open shelters or localize things. Also includes, for some reason, out of your home, whether it be flooded, a fire, or anything else, they put you up in a kind of housing for a period of time and give you so much money.
We've never heard from them at the Ruption Club at all. And, you know, we had done that before. And can put a generator in, because having these places without a generator, they're not much. And we do have gas heat down there, so if it's a winter function, all we need is a generator to have a warm building. That's all I have.
But this is a new memorandum of understanding, it's not renewal. Okay.
Any more questions? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next thing on the agenda is Baco Legislative Priority Issue Survey. Mr. Dalton.
If any of you have any things that we like bringing up, the Virginia Association of Counties, we include in the legislative package. We need to get those in so they can start talking to resolutions. I know we have a public hearing on road plans Thursday, but it appears that we're heading back and reversing funding to BDOT instead of moving forward. I don't know how that issue would happen, but pretty plain, if you were in a six-year plan, we're having less money now than we had before they did the tax releases.
And steering committees start their meetings in June to start preparing legislative in the spring.
Does Baco have committees, like on rural roads, that-
They have transportation. I would suggest that you volunteer, come and get on one of those committees. Mr. Reeves is on that.
Environmental and agriculture steering.
Environmental and agriculture, but there's a group of, and I'll forge it by email, those committees.
And the committees meet twice a year. One in the spring, one in the fall, then they meet at the Homestead right before the annual meeting.
Well, it's unique, not unique, the heavy hitters don't have any unsurfaced roads. That's just the way it is. And the counties in rural areas, South Side and Southwest Virginia, have the bulk of the unsurfaced roads, so they're not getting any attention from BDOT. And they're not going to get any unless somebody like Baco will go speak for us. We go down there to legislative days and get in a crowd and get exposed to a lot of germs, but I don't think it really gets a lot done when you're going down there rushing from one legislator to the next. So maybe with some emphasis from these rural counties, we could get some funding back where it's really desperately needed.
And that's, like Mr. Dalton said, you need to volunteer for these steering committees, because the Fairfax's and the Northern Virginias do send people, I mean, they have people on all of these committees, and they speak their mind. And we need people from this end of the state, because, you know, Baco does a real good job down at the General Assembly advocating for the counties and what we want to see done. But the more voices in Southwest Virginia we get on these steering committees, the more things we can get in Baco to bring up in the General Assembly in the spring. Any more discussion? Okay, move on to other, have any other business bring before the board, Mr. Dalton?
If we may, move backwards a little bit on the policy.
Yes, sir.
You spoke about this water adjustment policy. Park County Ordinance deals with water management, deals with leak adjustments. I think we've got to have a public hearing to make. I guess, set that for the same day as we begin the public hearing for trash disposal. Would that be okay?
That'd be fine. We need a motion. Have a motion.
I think since we've got a previous motion, it's sort of an amendment to that, of enacting the ordinance. County Attorney, if you can speak to that. That's what we're whispering about over here.
Okay, we have a minute in the motion to have the public hearing on the water. Let me go back.
Amendment.
Amend the water, Ward, the water-
Amend the water.
It'd be amendment three to the turn on-
96 dash four. I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Set it on the same night, on 17th at 7:00 PM or 7:05 for the public hearing. Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Public hearing is set for June 17th at 7:05 or whatever the time is. Any other thing?
I just, I sent everybody an email last week that I'll be off most of June, unless you say that I should be here. I'll be here most days before everybody gets here, leave, before they arrive, putting out the instructions, but for the most part, I'm doing something else in June.
I think there are certain days he ought to be on my farm, and certain days he ought to be on your farm, and on the days that he's not on either one of them and he's not here, he'll, he can go to his farm.
Yeah. Especially when I'm on vacation.
That'd be all right. I can probably make that up.
Okay.
As long as I don't have to pay for the repairs.
If you tired up, you got to pay.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a closed meeting.
Before you get out of there, let me do this one.
Okay.
When you had your, when you had the supervisor's report, I said I had something later. We need a, according to BDOT, we need a proposal or ordinance or a motion from the board to make that section of Park Street, which is also known as 1001 in Max Meadows, one way to stop those trucks from creating a hazard down there at the Pentecostal Church. We've discussed this for a year now, and VDOT's finally agreed that's the best solution. But now they need a resolution from the board asking that that be done, and then they can implement that. It's already been two study and discussion at Bristol. And to so you understand, it would make it one way from Pepper's Ferry Road down to that corner there at the church. The church has already agreed to it, and there's not any other residences, I don't think, on that property.
It'd be one way north.
North, from the church up to Pepper's Ferry Road.
Was you trying to keep trucks from turning in that way, correct?
Be from the church up to the road, one way.
Well, I would have said that totally different. It would be that they can't come off of Pepper's Ferry.
Yeah.
So it'd be one way from Pepper's Ferry to the church.
Well, no, it would be one way from the church to Pepper's Ferry.
Okay, the way the cars will go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's the same thing that you're looking at, yeah.
Right. There's what it looks like on the screen. Do make that motion there.
Are you going to make that one?
I made that a motion that week.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution to allow one-way traffic from the church to Pepper's Ferry Road on what's the name of that?
It's Park Street or 1001 is the state sign on.
I open the floor for discussion. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Any other business before we move on? Here and none, next order on business is a closed meeting, Code of Virginia Section 2.1 dash 3, acquisition of property.
I'll move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss as permitted by Virginia Code 2 dash 2, or excuse me, 2.2 dash 3711A3, a matter involving the acquisition of property for public purposes.
I have a second. Everybody's back in. Have a motion that we come out of closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor of coming out of closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Here and none?
I'll read a resolution. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, if such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
I have a second.
You have a second.
I'll do a roll call vote to certify, Mr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Okay, do you have any motions?
I move that we authorize the county administrator and staff to continue negotiation on said property.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 No.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes six to one. Next item on the agenda is informational package. Anybody have any questions on the informational package, anything that's in it? Here and none, does anybody else have anything else to bring before the board at this time?
On Thursday night, just a question, I know we have the six-year plan being here, I mean, do we need a representative to go to the technology school graduation, or do we all need to be here? I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's important one way or the other, I just, you know, was asking, you know.
If you want to go and represent the board at the technology center graduation, I think it's. Well, I mean, I can, I can do that or I can be here, it doesn't matter. I didn't know whether, this is the first time, I guess, that we've had a conflict.
I don't, I don't think that.
How many?
You've been in contact with the managers, one of any roads that claim to be districted? You've got some, Greasy Creek, but will they, will they add it back?
Well, I mean, I don't mind coming, you know, to this, and maybe it's not important that the board supervisor have a representative. And at the same time? Yeah, it's at seven o'clock. So, but I'll, I'll come here and I don't think that, you know, it'll, it'll matter, especially they know that we have that going on. Of course, if I don't come, I don't know what y'all vote for.
Actually, I hope that they don't vote for anything, that's the weird comments.
Yes.
My understanding is VDOT thinks they can add a few roads to the plane. I haven't really heard a lot of people ask me why they want to get on the plane.
Well, how do you, how do you go back to that other thing, having a hearing? It seems reasonable to me that they're asking to put some back on it because they believe their mission is getting done. Like when you look at the deal, there's still a lot of work to be done, but in the Fort Spiegel District, I would think that a high priority would be to do the best possible greenway. And that hasn't been on, because of maintenance costs and the amount of traffic over there and how bad it is. And if you've got any others in the district that I've overlooked, tell me about them.
I got two or three that's called me in Spiegel District.
Yeah, I have two.
I have one.
Especially one of them, side lane. What it'll do is demolition. Don't need them, don't worry. It'll grab one. I don't have another key.
I had one that, I don't know the name of the road, I think it's up there where Eric Crowder, M-Curves, it was on the six-year plan to straighten M-Curves out there at one time.
Yeah, he talked to me about that. Six nineteen or something.
Six nineteen.
It ain't six nineteen.
No, that's up at Spiegel.
That's my way. Of course, it goes all the way down to Major, it's Major Graham Road is six nineteen too.
Can't remember what route number he said. He talked to me about that.
They've been several accidents out there and there was one when he called, they'd been another accident out there. He was mentioning that at a plan, you talking about Eric Crowder who lives out, what is that, Fairview? He was talking in the, in the planning commission about how several years ago they came through and, you know, and widened the right of way so that they could, could, you know, fix that road and then they never fixed it. And then he said it took him a long time to get his right of way back. So, has he, has, has he moved to the state and gotten the right of way back? I mean. I don't know how they.
He said the same thing.
He said something to the state, then turned around and give them the right of way back or something like that, I don't. Yeah, well, he said it took him a long time. Well, he was wanting to know where to build a fence, he had to build a fence and I think that was the biggest thing.
He also, well, he said he couldn't really build a fence and VDOT wasn't coming through and tearing out the right of way and rebuilding the fence, he was going to need it. He mentioned the planning commission.
So it wasn't a situation where the, the state took some more for right of way and then he got that land back?
That's, that's what you heard in the planning commission is what I heard, that's the first I had heard of that.
Okay.
We didn't bring that one up. Apparently stopped everyone.
Yeah, I just, you know, I didn't know. I don't know if the right of way is actually acquired or they was, I think they was told not to build no fence, that they were going to fix it. And then they was wanting, then they needed to build a fence and they was wanting to, well, you know, where did I put it or something?
It was a conservation reason to stop the road. It was some conservation reasons, there wasn't allowance in there for road construction.
So there's nothing changed on that then? Anything else? Hearing none, I'll recess us until Thursday, May the 29th at seven PM for the public hearing. VDOT secondary road, six-year plan. Us back to order from recess, tonight we have a public hearing on the VDOT secondary road, six-year plan. We have Mr. Jeff Russell here that will give a short presentation. I want to thank everybody for coming. At the end of Mr. Russell's presentation, we'll call the people that signed up to come up and speak to the, to the road that they want to talk about. Mr. Russell?
Good evening. We'll kind of go through the proposed plan and allocations for With County, the secondary six-year plan. In looking at the first sheet, there, it shows five types of funding and some of them's got zeros where last year they had money. With County's overall six-year plan was, is $2,377,000 less this year than what it was last year. There was a drastic cut and that was statewide. It's due to shortfalls in the revenue, the allocations that was projected last year. So statewide, we saw a cut in the six-year program, the funding for it. Due to that cut, really this year, we have no room to add any new projects onto the plan. At the same time, we didn't take any projects off. Some of the projects, their estimated add date had been moved up or moved further out. It's going to take longer to get the money necessary to construct them. So that's kind of where we're at this year and pretty well the roads that was on there last year is on there this year again, with no room to add anything.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Russell?
Mr. Russell? Johnny Lane will be coming off because it'll be completed, right?
Right. It's supposed to be completed probably around July of this year.
Okay. Are there any other of those projects here? I know we're looking at St. Peters Road, Johnny Lane, Archer Road, Dumper Road. Are any of those are going to be completed and taken off?
There's two St. Peters projects on this six-year plan.
Right, I understand that.
The second one that has been completed and as soon as the project cost centers are closed, when we make sure all the bills have come in, it will come off.
Okay.
Now which one, which one was that?
Route six nineteen, St. Peters Road, it's the second project listed.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Housman?
No, I just, we're checking on those, on Johnny Lane and then to see if anything else was coming off.
Mr. Robert?
Is the road still on schedule?
It will be fully funded, actually next year.
Next year.
But we are going to start construction probably July of this year. Code of Virginia says we can begin a project if it will be fully funded in the next year. So it's done for, we're going to start it this year.
While you're on that, if we go on and commit Archer Road to rural rust, won't that help your overall budget shortfall?
Yes, that would reduce the.
Around $3 million.
It would, it reduced that project estimate right now, it's, in here is a minimum plan. If we can get the property owner's approval, if we can get all the, all the permissions we need to, to be able to do it rural rustically, that would drastically reduce the cost of this project and that money could be put towards unfunded projects that's currently on the plan or possibly add new projects. But that's something we'll have to make sure we're able to do before we commit it to rural rustic and change the estimate.
Tell me that again, did I understand anything you said there?
All right. If we can build Archer Road as a rural rustic project, that will reduce the estimated cost quite a bit. We could then take that money and apply it towards other projects on the plan that are lacking in funding, or we could add projects to the plan possibly. But prior to changing this estimate, we need to ensure that we're able to do it as a rural rustic.
Is that a landowner decision or is that a VDOT decision or both?
Well, we, VDOT, we have said we think we can build it as a rural rustic if we can get the easements that's required, the fencing agreements, we have to get all that squared away.
Okay. If, if we can get those, does that leave room while we've got the public hearing here to suggest what roads ought to be added?
My suggestion would be to go ahead at the public hearing, let people talk about their wishes, what their requests are, we can take note of it, and then when this money becomes available, we'll have that on record.
Thank you.
Mr. Dotson?
From the six-year plan we currently have, back in twelve, fourteen, fifteen years ago, we had to take roads off the six-year plan. Isn't there still a couple of roads that was taken off that plan that haven't been added back?
Amen, amen.
Twenty years ago.
In 2009 and 10, we did edit the six-year plan to try to make it more realistically a six-year plan. There were too many projects on there, no way we could get them all done with the allocations we were being provided. At that time, the current, at that time, the current Board of Supervisors in With County submitted a resolution to VDOT with a list of roads and that asked them to be put back on the plan in this order until the list is exhausted. Currently, all the roads, to my knowledge, are on the plan except for Greasy Creek.
Uh-uh, New Bethel's not.
Okay, it's, it's not on my resolution.
It was one that took off.
Twenty years ago.
Okay, we'll have to have some order. We'll, we'll have, get everybody a chance to come up and speak and talk about the road they want to put on the plan and then we'll, we'll go from there. Does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Russell?
One last question.
Yes.
Today, we've been notified that the state of Virginia is going to be three to $500 million short in revenue, or have been short in revenue in the last month or so, increase between now and the beginning. Is that going to affect the revenues that y'all projected?
It very well could. And I want to emphasize also, when you look at the six-year plan, the only money we're guaranteed is the current year, 2014, 15. The next five years out, from 15 through 20, those are just projections. And that's, that's why last year the projections were made, it didn't materialize, and this year there was a lot less that was able to be allocated due to the revenue shortfall. So, not sure if I answered your question.
I think you did.
It, it very well could affect it and what we've seen from last year, this year could be a part of that as well, so.
Because if we lost $100 million from last year to this year, increases in taxes and things and the shortfalls, it appeared to me that that would affect this plan.
The revenue.
This year's money is guaranteed future years.
Just projection. You know, the revenues, the taxes, all that has a direct input on our construction program, the six-year plan, our maintenance, what we're able to do in maintenance, repaving roads, it has a direct effect.
I have a question, you said, you were talking about St. Peters. I mean, I've been asked, I bet I've been asked four or five times in the last two days or three days, have, are they going to finish the other half of St. Peters? And if so, what are they going to do?
Right now, my understanding, it's still in the engineering phases. It had $2.9 million in previous funding. It says here that it needs $3.4 million in additional funding to complete the right of way and construction phases and it will be fully funded in 2015, 16. So, right now, when I go into our program manager computer program, with all the dates in it, it says that the add date is June 2015. So, they're looking at this project beginning in June 2015 as of right now. Now, the plans, I haven't saw the plans, they're still in the development process, so I don't know exactly.
That's basically what I told everybody that I'd been told.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Russell? Well, thank you, Mr. Russell, for your update and we will have the. Sorry about that. And now we'll go into the public comment period. Mr. Hall?
Okay, our first speaker is Barbara Henshaw.
You talked about the road number and then she's.
She wrote it down. Ms. Henshaw, can you say your address, please?
Yes, sir, I will. I have a prepared statement. Good evening, I'm Barbara Henshaw, representing the residents living on New Bethel Road, Route 666 in the western With County, many of whom are here with us tonight. I would like them to stand and be recognized if they would. We are here tonight to appeal to the Board of Supervisors and to VDOT representatives our desire to be placed on the six-year plan of paving of this road. To date, we have been on a sixty-year plan, as many before us have tried to overcome this chronic problem. We ask that priority be given to this road for the following reasons. In addition to all the previous attempts, about twenty years ago, the road was placed on the six-year plan. At that time, a study was done, the costs were determined, and the landowners all agreed to give the necessary land in a notarized document. However, due to the economic times, the road was removed from this list. It was not put back when the funds were replenished. Please note the following. There are fourteen residents, two churches, the Light of Hope Mennonite Church with forty families in attendance, their school has thirty students that attend on a daily basis, New Bethel Methodist Church has seventy-five enroll with thirty-three attending members, a thriving business, which is the LBC Spa and Salon, who today told us they serve approximately two hundred customers per week. There are several farms on our road, it's also a bus route and a shortcut. It's also a bus route and a shortcut to the Old Stage Road. The homeowners living on New Bethel pay significant taxes. We keep our properties in immaculate condition, and the lawn's manicured. Everyone works hard to be a good neighbor. The one thing that we have no control over is the chronic dust and dirt problem that plagues us. Our vehicles are never clean or in alignment. Our friends and family avoid bringing their vehicles on the road unless it's rained. We seldom sit on our front porches anymore due to the dust that we breathe into our lungs. We now call VDOT in Richmond regularly to get the road treated for this dust problem, but it lasts a few days at best. Additionally, we recently read on VDOT's website of current paved roads slated to get reconstruction. Our thoughts are, everyone deserves one before someone gets two. We would not object to having just tar and gravel, paving on the existing road without widening it, or any surfacing that would eliminate the dust and the dirt problem. In conclusion, we thank you for your time and your consideration, and we ask that immediate priority be given to this road before another 60 years passes and some of our residents are no longer here to enjoy porch sitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanchel. Could I ask one question? How long a section of road is New Bethel? Less than two miles?
It's, it's one of the few connector roads, I mean, from Withfield up to Williams Ample Orchard. There are only two connector roads with Old Stage Road. One is South Fork, which is paved, and the other is New Bethel Road, which is not. And may I ask Mr. Russell one question?
Yes.
Would New Bethel qualify as a rural rustic? And the reason I'm, I'm asking that is because that makes it easier to... Mr. Russell, would you explain what rural rustic is as opposed to the other type of roads?
Rural rustic is a concept that took a place of pave-in place years ago. Basically, to qualify as a rural rustic road, it has to be a state road, 50 vehicles per day, minimum grading to get a 16-foot wide surface, very little work. Basically, you pull some ditches, you might do a little bit of widening, put in some pipe, and then you can pave it. So, one obstacle also is fences, being, having the room to get a 16-foot wide surface, two-foot shoulders within the fence line or the existing right-of-way, so.
We do have permission from all the landowners to take what was needed, and that was in our first attempt.
And...
And I think that there's only two new families since that time.
I think the route would, as it exists now, would be wide enough for a rural rustic. I'd like to look at the additional widening and needed, so, frame colors and make a good base.
And I believe you had asked if it would be a candidate for rural rustic. And what I, what I remember, I don't, it would, I think it would be, but I would have to write the...
Well, I, I thought that it would, but I just wanted to, you know, to ask you, you know, to double check. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Pat Dix. And I'll just remind everybody that speaks, because we didn't announce this first, and Ms. Hanchel was certainly within her timeframe, but if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you do get five minutes. If you're speaking as an individual, you get three minutes. So I'll try to give everybody an update.
My name is Pat Dix. I live at 131 New Bethel Road. I've resided there for 38 years. Our road seems to have been passed over in the past. As Barbara said before, we've had it on the docket before, and it's been pulled. But my question, and I'll, to whoever, is that State Route 666 has been tarred and gravelled across Tabernacle. On one end, State Route 666 that goes across Hogback. On the other end, has been taken care of. New Bethel Road in the middle has been left out, and I wondered why. And I found out tonight it was taken off the docket. I also have spoken to some of the, some of you guys about this. I have severe medical problems. I have breathing problems, and the dusty roads are really bad. I end up in Christiansburg taking shots twice a week because I can't breathe, because the most contributing factor is the dusty road. And I would appreciate it if anything can be done to help with these situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix.
Okay, our next speaker is Michael Dix.
I'm Michael Dix. I live at 131 New Bethel Road. And Barbara and Pat pretty well summed up everything, but I'm like, I'd like to know why we was on a six-year plan like 20-some years ago, and now we gotta go back on a six-year plan. I mean, why? Is this gonna mean that, what, about 2034, we come back and do this again? I probably won't be here.
I hope not, Mr. Dix.
Well, that's...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You hope he won't be here? I hope he won't be here. I hope he won't be here. I probably, I probably won't, I probably won't be here.
I mean, you know, you'll have to come over to New Bethel Cemetery and get my remarks. But, you know, that's, that's my question, is why was we...
I don't know why you were taken off the six-year plan 20 years ago.
And then, why do we have to go through all this again? I mean, why, why can't we start over immediately? Because I'm 70 years old, time's clicking, you know? We need to do something. I like to drive on a decent road just one time before I have to take that long ride in that hearse, but that's all I've got to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dix.
Okay, our next speaker is Fran Maab.
Welcome, Ms. Maab.
Good evening, gentlemen. My road is Archer Road, and I'm looking at the money here. We are on here, not as a rural rustic, but I'm hoping that they are going to put us on as rural rustic. We've been on the six-year plan since, well, for 14 years. And then we were transferred to a resolution that this body came up with listing roads. And hopefully, if it goes rural rustic, then it would be in this order that's on the sheet with us coming next. And the money, if there's not enough money to do all of it, if you could do part of it. And I don't think any landowners have been spoken to, but I don't think there's any problem. And I don't see any problems. Hopefully, VDOT will put it on a rural rustic, look at it, and we can get something done next year, if not this year.
Thank you, Ms. Maab.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Gary Harvey.
My name's Gary Harvey. I live on 686 Greasy Creek Road, and I'm representing the people on, on the road. Just like the people on New Bethel, we were on the plan supposedly 20, 25 years ago, and it didn't come to pass, so we started again in 2005. And when they checked into it, they said we were never on the plan 20 years ago. I don't know. I wasn't there. I've lived on Greasy Creek now for 20 years. People have tried for years and years to get it on, and Jean knows this. In 2005, we had the traffic count and everything, and we got put on the six-year plan. Four years later, in 2009, they took us off, which I didn't understand. I mean, just, I don't know why, they just didn't leave us on there, you know? But they put us in the storage list, which is, I guess, the same thing. And from what I understand, we're next to go back on. When this thing happened in 2005, and I don't know, I don't think, most of you were not in, you were not here. 2005, we were told that we were about, we were gonna be the first ones taken care of. And I don't know if that was based on being able to do the rural rustic or what. By 2009, we were on the bottom of the list. I don't know how. Do you know if we're eligible for rural rustic? Anybody know?
I don't know if you're eligible. That's something that Mr. Russell would have to drive through and see, wouldn't you, Mr. Russell?
I was told, and I don't know for sure, but I'd like to say we're on the first, top of the list supposedly, because we had been on the list for so many years. And then, like, these guys, it got lost or whatever, and then we repetitioned and got back on the list in '05. And when '09 came around, the same thing, there was the same people were not there, and, and we were at the bottom of the list. And they told me then that's because we could not be done as a rural rustic. I don't know why. Maybe we can't. Greasy Creek Road, much like the last lady was talking about, our, our road is about four miles long approximately. I don't know how long ago, but when I moved there 20 years ago, the first third of the road was paved. And about 10 years later, the second third was paved. Now, we're on the last part, the last one and one-quarter mile. And it's, it's always baffled me, when you have a road going through, why wouldn't you paint the whole road? Why would you do pieces of it? And I understand the money situation, but if you do one, two, and three is next. And that's been years since that, that second part's been done. Maybe you guys can take another look at it, if you will, Mr. Russell, and see if, if it would work for the rural rustic. Hopefully, we can get it on. I hope so. And I understand the budget concerns, and I understand there's only so much money to go around. The, the other thing, I'm gonna toss this in, and I know that the guys that work on the road are very, very limited with their resources and with manpower at this point. We've had a little bit of trouble, and I spoke to Jean about it, about getting stone gravel put on the road. And when they do put it on, they put brown gravel. I don't know where you get brown gravel, but that's what's going on in the road. And they just put a little pile here, a little pile here. It's never the, they have not completed a whole road. The last time we did it was probably two months ago, and that's after me calling. And the road was not even half-covered. I mean, the ditches are full. There's 10,000 tons of gravel in the ditches. They just don't never clean the ditches anymore, which results in flooding of the roads, wash burning of the roads, and they gotta come out and fix it again. But they refuse, or whatever, they can't, I don't know what it is, but they will not, or cannot, whatever, clean the ditches out. To me, if you do a job, you do it right one time, you don't come back in six, in six weeks and do it again. And I appreciate you guys' attention, and all I'm asking is that we get, you know, consideration, and if we are indeed next on the list to go on, I wish we, I hope we can get on. If we can lift a rural rustic, maybe that'll speed us up too. I know everybody else here wants a road done, too, and I understand. Thank you, guys, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Right, our next speaker is Wayne Yoder.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm here in behalf of a pastor at Light of Hope Mennonite Church, and for the New Bethel folks. Our church is just, just off of the pavement, so, you know, we don't, we don't, but some of us live out the other side, and we'd use New Bethel a little more if it were paved, definitely. But I do thank you for what you do. Like Mrs. Hanchel said, we have, on Sunday mornings, we have maybe 40 vehicles in and out. During the school year, we have maybe 30 a day in and out. So there is quite a bit of traffic on that, on that little part, and some that runs the length, the length of New Bethel Road. I would definitely, from my perspective, from what, from what VDOT said, gentlemen, I, I think that New Bethel would probably qualify without a lot of work. The road I live on, Cinnamon Run, I live on the stretch that wasn't done as well. And Cinnamon Run, the section between Berea Road and Greasy Creek is still dirt, gravel. And we run into a lot of the same problems that, that my friend back here on Greasy Creek mentioned, flooding due to, to drainage. Drainage is the biggest issue on Cinnamon Run. And I doubt Cinnamon Run, you know, that might be in the 50-year plan, I'm not sure. But I'm pretty sure that we would not qualify for, for rural rustic, because the road would need widening. There are some kind of dangerous spots. I had one issue with UPS coming one way, and I was coming the other way, and there's a rock on my side of the road and a tree on his, so I took the rock. But, and there's a school bus, I met the school bus the other morning, and it's pretty tight for a bus route and that kind of thing, but, but, yeah, I just, we just, we wanna support the, our good neighbors on, on New Bethel Road. It would be an asset to have that. I think rural rustic would, would work great if, if that qualifies. But, and just a pit, just a pitch for, for Cinnamon Run, if you ever can get around to that. We know the folks do, do work hard, and I do appreciate VDOT's concern, and I, I appreciate when I see that, I know, I know people don't always understand that, but when people understand that when funds are limited, you don't just keep spending money like there's no tomorrow. I, I have a lot of appreciation and respect for that, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder.
All right, Chloe Bishop.
I can't thank all of you all, man, here. I don't know about Bishop, but what I wanted to say, I appreciate Steve and Joe, him trying to get a little stuff on that dust pile of mine down there this week, it helped. Of course, they getting no rain, y'all got all this up here. Of course, since Weaver's rented all his property out down there, and all them tree farmers and pumpkin farmers, I don't know what I'm gonna do, and it's so much traffic on that road down there. But, like I say, we got the river, we got three ways into it, got Rose's Hollow, and got State Park out there on Beetle's Bend now, and all that subdivision out there. Then we got down to Carter's where hell these folks is, they all going to the river this summer, and I would appreciate, if I could just keep the dust down. I don't know if we'll ever get anything done. I think I've been on that five-year plan for several years, but never did get on it. I reckon I had enough names one time, on, and I might have set them five or 100 on and turned them, but never did hear nothing about it. But several years ago, we got it fixed from the road out to the church, but never could get it no further. And it should be hooked together, that 619. It's, people cut through that before, it's, it'll miss all that stuff, and they just, well, this week, I had them tractors and trailers down in there, that body company, them pumpkins and tree planters, that's, see my eyes and everything was down in there. But if I could just keep the dust down this summer, I guess, if the Lord lets me live that long, I lost one of my good buddies this year, this past week, you know? Carson, he was, he used to help me, but I don't guess, he thought he might live long enough to see if, get it fixed, but maybe a good Lord will, I might live long enough to get something done to it. Appreciate that, boys.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Tim hopes you do. You hope he does live long enough.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bishop.
I don't live down with Dad. I live here in town, but we, we oversee him. I represent, everybody down in there, they always say, "Joyce, call, call." And we appreciate what VDOT does do for us, and, and then, and all you all and everything. But what we would like to propose, if you all would take a study, you all don't realize, we can come up here and say, "There's 100 cars a day." It truly is. When Dad speaks about Weaver, we've had tractor-trailers this week, we've had lime trucks, plus the people that just comes out to cruise to see what's going on. And that's like Weaver, the old mansion down there. You know, people are nosy, and they think it's a major highway. Other morning, one of the tractor-trailers almost run over Dad. He does like 25, 30 miles an hour on the road, you know? But, you know, if you all could take a study to just see, and maybe we could get it hard topped, or, you know, because we have all the people that goes down on the old George Guy Dunford's place. And, you know, and you look out, and you might see a, a four-wheeler, you might see boats, anything and everything. And we used to, didn't worry, we used to have just the horses. But they, the horses don't even, you know, ride up and down the road now, people, because it's so much traffic on that road. But then, if you all would, if VDOT would take a study and just see, and we thank Mr. Hale, because he's really working for us, and we hope we can get back on the plan, and my dad will, thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's everybody that signed up to speak.
I know there's some people that come in after the sign-up board was, do y'all have any comments y'all would like to make? Okay. Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out, and we'll take a look at this, and we'll work with VDOT, and we'll do the best we can, that's all we can say, and, but I do appreciate y'all coming out and, and spending your time, and, and we will work hard for you, that's all I, I can promise you that.
That's all we ask.
Okay. And thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.